All right, let's call the order of the Sparks City Council meeting for Monday, September 27th, 2021 with a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Council members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney, Acting City Attorney Duncan.
Here.
City Manager Kruz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to opening ceremonies, invocation. Councilman Dare, will you lead us in our invocation and please stay standing for the pledge?
Sure. Lord, I come to you today and I thank you for our day and I thank you for even what this last weekend represented for many of our veterans. I pray for those Gold Star families that this last weekend took them pause and they take a pause every day to remember their loved ones, that the rest of us join them and just remembering those who paid the ultimate price. Thank you for all of our veterans, our first responders, and so many others who put their life on the line. Please keep them safe, but thank you for our day and I do pray you help give us wisdom and have your blessing over the city. In your name we pray, amen.
Mr. Anderson, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yes, sir. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We did not receive any additional public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the agenda. Mr. Anderson is going to make a motion.
Yes, I move to approve the agenda with item 9.6 to be heard after 11.1.
Looking for a second. Mr. Dare, we got him backwards.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Anybody want to pull anything on the agenda? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Okay, move to the minutes. Consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the concurrent meeting with Sparks City Council, Reno City Council, Washoe County Commission for August 30th, 2021, and the Sparks City Council meeting for September 13th, 2021. Mr. Abbott.
I move to approve the minutes of the Spar-- it says Sparks City Council meeting, but it should be the concurrent meeting.
The concurrent and the Sparks City Council meeting.
Yeah, I'm just reading the suggested motion. So it could be concurrent meeting for Sparks City Council, Reno City Council, and Washoe County Commission for August 30th, and the Sparks City Council meeting for September 13th.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vanderwell.
Second.
Any discussions, additions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 7, announcements, presentation, recognition items, and items of special interest. Boards and commissions vacancy announcement, Sparks Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Kruz.
Thank you, Mayor Lawson. Members of the council, for the record, Neil Kruz, your city manager, here to announce a single vacancy for a partial term on the Sparks Park and Recreation Commission. That term will run through June 30th of 2022. Applicants must either be a resident of the City of Sparks or hold a valid Sparks business license. Applications will be accepted through this Friday, October 1st at 5:00 p.m. If you're interested in serving on this or any other committee, you should complete a community service application, most easily arrived at at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us/getinvolved. All one big word. Once you're there, click on volunteering for a Sparks Board, Commission, or Committee, fill out the form, and press submit. Thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Sure. All right, moving on to item 7.2, Storm Water Pollution Awareness Month. Is there anyone here to accept that proclamation? Come on up, have a seat, and we'll have you speak afterwards. Okay, Christopher, you have that one?
I do, I do, I do. So, we're excited to share this with you. We all know this is important to the infrastructure that we do. It says, whereas polluted storm water runoff discharged into rivers, lakes, and streams can result in the death of wildlife, destruction of vital ecosystems, contamination of drinking water resources, and disruption of recreational activity. And whereas the Clean Water Act of 1972-- and a side note, that's the day I was born, year I was born-- prohibits the discharge of any pollutant to the navigable waters of the United States unless authorized by the Environmental Protection Agency. And whereas a major source of pollutants in the navigable-- that's a hard word. Navigable, there you go. Waters of the United States is polluted urban and suburban stormwater runoff that flows directly into rivers, lakes, and streams untreated threatening public health. And whereas the common sources of stormwater pollution are sediments, automotive chemicals, litter, and debris, household hazardous chemicals, and yard and pet waste. And whereas it is imperative that these pollutants be prevented from entering stormwater runoff along Nevada's roadways. And whereas Stormwater Pollution Awareness Month provides an opportunity to encourage greater efforts in the City of Sparks and across Nevada to reduce stormwater pollution. Now therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, does hereby proclaim October 2021 as Stormwater Pollution Awareness Month. Very cool.
Give us your name for the record and say a few words if you'd like.
Yeah, my name is Laurel Longero. It's L-O-N-G-E-R-O. I'm a PIO with Environmental Division at Enda. And so, we started this effort, we're working with Clark County Water Quality, as well as KTMB up here in northern Nevada, to just raise awareness about stormwater pollution across the state. So we have a month-long slate of activities. We have a social media campaign going on. We have a webinar on October 20th for homeowners. And we have an art contest, poster contest for elementary school kids across the state, starting October 1st.
Nice. We are very aware of our stormwater here.
Yes.
Very aware. All right, Christopher's going to come and you guys can get a picture together. Our crack photographer over here, Julie, do a little. And then he'll be put out on Facebook with millions of people that view our city council meetings. All right, proclamation, 7.3 proclamation, National Fallen Firefighter Memorial Service. Chief, you're going to take this one? Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States have designated the Day of the Annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency service personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others by lowering the American flag on all federal buildings to half-staff. And whereas an average of 80 firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year. And whereas firefighters and emergency services personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in the local community. And whereas the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Day marks the beginning of the Observance of Fire Prevention Week in 2021. And whereas it is essential to increase efforts to reduce deaths, injuries, and property losses from fire. And whereas National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Day provides citizens of the City of Sparks to remember all fire and emergency personnel who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community and to pay respect to the survivors of these fallen heroes by participating in Bells Across America for Fallen Firefighters, by tolling a bell, pausing for a moment of silence, and reading a special passage to honor the sacrifices of these public servants and their families. And whereas National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Day reminds citizens of the City of Sparks to honor fire and emergency services personnel, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to duties have rendered invaluable service to the community and its citizens. Now therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of Sparks, City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 3rd, 2021 as National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Day.
Chief?
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council. Jim Reed, your fire chief, for the record. Yes, firefighting continues to be a continued-- or a dangerous occupation. I know you said 80 in the proclamation, and I looked at the stats before I came over, and we actually had 102 so far this year. So, it continues, like I said, to be dangerous, and COVID has just added to that over the past, you know, year and a half, two years. On a side note, on a personal note, I'm retired FAO driver, Richard Feldman, who retired about five, six years ago. He did pass away in January of 2020, and he was honored last month in Colorado for his line of duty death. But council's designation as a firefighter day is appreciated, and it shows your respect for our profession and that you do recognize what we do is risky and we are trying to save the property lives and the environment for this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, are you going to stick around for?
Yep.
Fire Prevention Week? I see the fire marshal's here with you. We'll get you in all of them. We'll do, yeah, we'll take pictures after all. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir. I'm going to read the proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. So whereas the City of Sparks is committed to ensuring the safety and security of those living in and visiting the City of Sparks. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas in 2019, home fires killed more than 2,770 people, and fire departments responded to 339,500 home fires in the United States. And whereas smoke alarms send smoke well before people can, alerting people to danger in the event of a fire, when people may have little to, as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in a reported home fire in half. And the City of Sparks residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and know how to respond. And whereas the City of Sparks residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas City of Sparks residents are encouraged to ensure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities. And whereas City of Sparks fire responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires, home fire injuries through the prevention and protection and education. And whereas City of Sparks residents are responsive to public education measures better, that are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, reminds all City of Sparks residents of the importance of learning the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the City of Sparks, and urges all of the people of the City of Sparks to learn the sounds of fire safety and to support the many public safety activities and efforts the City of Sparks Fire and Emergency Services are holding. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, my name is, for the record, Chris McCovens. I am the Fire Marshal for the City of Sparks. I want to thank you for recognizing this because it is vital that the citizens of Sparks understand the importance of hearing that sound and knowing what to do. As you pointed out, having a understanding of what your smoke detector and what your carbon monoxide sounds like, having a plan and having a meeting spot are three just very simple things that we can do to ensure the safety of our citizens, and we really encourage everybody to follow that practice. So, again, I want to thank you for recognizing this, and everybody needs to do their part to be fire safe.
Thank you, sir.
Have any questions?
Question from the council?
I have one quick question.
Okay.
When are we having pancakes? Well, we always do a run ahead of time, which we're all going to do, I think.
Yes, yes.
This year, it's only, it's only a 3, 5K, three miles.
It was discussed quite heavily this year, and again, it had to be pushed off.
Oh, okay.
But we will be doing it, we'll be doing it most certainly next year.
So we all have a year to train.
So, yeah, you have time to get ready and get trained, yeah.
All right, I'm only doing the point one part of it. All right, thank you. Julia, will you guys hang out and get some pictures with Julie? There you go, both our council members down there. Thank you.
What's up, Bob? Yeah, I'm a lowrider.
You got her going. Got the gangster lean going.
I'm a six-five.
Living in the, living the dream with the gangster lean.
Yeah. Appreciate it, Sparks. Crazy motherfucker, man. It's awful.
Hey, 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 hey.
It's a pleasure.
Okay, thanks, chief. Thanks, Fire Marshal, appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to consent items. Anybody wishing to pull a consent item?
One more confirmation.
Oh, sorry. I've already moved on.
Yeah, he's just moving past me.
All right, Ms. Bybee, Walk to School Day.
Whereas parents driving children to school can account for up to 25% of the morning rush hour traffic in the vicinity of schools. And whereas walking and bicycling to school reduces the number of vehicle trips in the vicinity of schools and potential conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians or bicyclists. And whereas reducing the number of vehicles driving students to school results in increased safety, reduced traffic congestion, improved air quality, and less fuel consumption in the vicinity of schools. And whereas the benefits related to physical activity at an early age play a leading role in reducing rates of heart disease, diabetes, and other obesity-related health problems among children. And whereas children walking and bicycling to school together with parents and caregivers opens opportunities to mentor children about pedestrian and bicycle safety and its benefits related to health and the environment. And whereas walking and bicycling to school offers an opportunity to build physical activity into both parents' and children's daily routines. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around Nevada are joining together to walk on International Walk to School Day on Wednesday, September 29th, 2021. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, we hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 29th, as International Walk to School Day.
My apologies for skipping over that.
Oh, that's okay.
Just give us your name for the record.
My name is Robbie Pate, Safe House Coordinator, Washoe County School District. First, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Larson, city council members, for having us here today. The Washoe County School District will celebrate Walk to School Day on Wednesday, September 29th. This annual event provides a great opportunity to reinforce safety messages to students, families, and the community, and to encourage everyone to protect the safety of our students while walking and bicycling to school. On a side note, last year was obviously a little bit different for the school district. We weren't at 100% capacity, which allowed students biking and walking. There wasn't as much congestion on the roads. It was a lot easier. This year, school's been in session approximately six weeks. We've already had three incidents involving cyclists and motorists. Luckily, they were all really minor incidents, but we have had three, so we're looking forward to September 29th to pass that educational message, not only to our students, but to the community as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of riding on Ride, bike to school week. I rode my Harley on that one.
You did, yeah. That was, that was a good one. We'll be doing that in the spring, so that's Bike to School Day. This is obviously Walk to School Day. Yep.
Yeah, the kids were enamored by the Harley.
They loved it, yeah.
It was fun. Okay, any questions from the council? Thank you, you guys do good work. I see I have MJ with you. She's retired, but she can't go away.
No, she's training me.
Are you easily trainable?
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to consent items. Anyone wishing to pull a consent item? Not? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Where are the kids? There they are. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve consent items 8-1 through 8-5 as submitted.
And Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Moving on to general business, 9.1. Consideration discussion and possible approval of the mayor's recommendation, recommended appointments to the Sparks Police Advisory Committee from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Richard Armstrong, Lilith Barron, Todd DeRimer, Rodney Donnelly, Terrell Foster, John Frye, Kathleen Hanley, Damon Harrell, Merrill Jessup II, Ricky Melanify, Emily Miranda Adams, Cassandra Morelet, David Morelet. Chief, you have this one.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, for the record, Chris Croftworth, your police chief. I think the mayor just said it perfectly for what's here, took it.
If you write it, I'll read it.
You did excellent, sir. And I'll kind of let you guys get on, and just so you're aware, some of, most of those folks are here with us today, so.
Questions from the council? Any comments from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Yes, I would just like to thank the chief and our city manager and HR and everybody it took to come up with forming this commission. We talked about it over a year ago in the summer, that this was an important component that we looked at, had heard from citizens, and in the climate that we were at, that really having a police advisory commission, so we could be better, even better connected for our community policing model, making sure we're hearing from the community, what their concerns were, and I think those voices and that communication is really important, and want to thank you all for making this happen. I really like the setup of the board. It is advisory, so it's not one setting policy for you or for the city, but that advisory and communication piece is really important to even improve more what we do and what you do, chief, with your team for the Sparks Police Department, so I'm really thankful for that and glad to see that we're finally here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dare?
Thank you. I think it's important, too, with this, this is a wonderful, wonderful addition, and I say it that way because we stand with our police 100%, and they continue to work very diligently to continue to reach into our community, to serve its best, and really know the community. But it's always good when we can add components of continued new perspectives, a way to see deeper into the community we have. And so this advisory board, those who are going to be on this, we want to thank you for serving, and in that capacity, give us the eyes to see and the heart to hear, all that kind of stuff, as you go and you work with our police officers. But I do want to make it very, very clear to our community, we strongly stand with our police, we appreciate what they do and how they serve our community, and now, and we look forward to the future what that looks like. Thanks.
Anyone else on the council? Mr. Anderson? I'd say you put your finger there.
Thanks. So, actually, before I make a motion, I'd just like to say, chief, I really appreciate you listening to the community and they're voicing their concerns and interest in this, as well as us on council. And I just want to thank also all of you that put your name out there and are going to be a part of this, so we appreciate you taking your time and energy to help us become better. So, thank you very much.
Let me make one comment first, is I got to read all the applications and all the history, and we went with, basically, I made no choices in this, I went with what the chief wanted, and I think he picked a great group, by the way. And the only one I wish we would have had was, we didn't get a student, which I wish we could have got that person. But we'll get one in the next go-around, but it's going to be, this is a big deal for us, this is a huge deal that, to make this happen, and that you, those of you who got selected are, you got a big job ahead of you, and it's going to, you're going to get some scrutiny, but it's, I think it's going to be well worth it to make a huge difference in our community as to the way that we police and treat our residents. So with that, then, who's going to read who the, oh, it's in the, it's in the motion, Mr. Anderson? Sorry.
Okay, I move to appoint Terrell Foster, Emily Miranda Adams, and Lilith Barron to the diverse multicultural group representatives, each for a three-year term. Kathleen Hanley is the Business Community Representative, and Damon Harrell, and Ricky Melanify, and John Frye as the Sparks Community At-Large Representatives, each for a two-year term.
Okay, I got a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I'll second it. Can I ask a question?
Can, under discussion.
Can we have the people that are here come up and introduce themselves?
While we get through the motion and then we'll bring them up.
At some point? Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, I got a motion to second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And it looks like motion carries unanimously.
Thanks, sir.
Good job, chief. This is going to be a big deal. And as Councilman Abbott requested, those of you who are selected, would you mind coming up to the front if you're present? We'd love to get a picture with you and our police chief.
Maybe introduce themselves.
Yes. Hey, chief, would you ask them to come and introduce themselves with me after you take a picture?
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
My name's Damon Harrell, I live in the Spanish Springs area of Sparks.
And let me ask you, and then will you guys do this for me? Just tell me why you wanted to be involved in this particular advisory committee, because I think your motives are important.
Yeah, honestly, I've always looked for a way to be involved in everything. I've got two young boys, 14 and 10. Sorry, they're both African-American, and I feel like I don't have an opportunity just to be right. We've got to make sure we can get it right. That's my modus.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, council. My name is John Frye. I'm a father of two mixed-gender children. My wife is Chinese, as are obviously my daughters, and the reason I chose to apply for this was I had an experience with the 2019 Regional Police Citizens Academy. Ever since then, I've kind of looked for ways that I might be able to help serve, and right now, that's not really possible because I am the stay-at-home father, stay-at-home parent for my daughters, and when my wife saw this, she thought, well, all the attention I've had and looked at, you know, I watched the news reports and such, she thought it'd be a good fit, so I applied and thought, what the heck, I can try to, I've got time, I can try to help, help somebody out there.
Thank you very much.
Kathleen Hanley, I'm Wingfield residence, been there for 15, 16 years, a business owner, been a business owner, Reno and Sparks, now primarily of Sparks since 2008. The reason for me getting involved, I know a couple people up here, and I listen to them a lot. Also, I think our police department needs more help. I respect them highly, and I just want to participate more.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mayor and council, I'm Terrell Foster. When I heard about the committee, I knew that it's something I needed to be involved with. I'm new to the community about two and a half years. I don't see many people in the community that look like me, and I wanted to make sure that we were represented. I'm also a member of the LGBT community, and of course, we hide a lot, so we can't identify each other, and I wanted to make sure that we were going to be represented. So, I look forward to the three years I've been approved and appointed, and if you need me personally for anything, please don't hesitate. And I think, Mr. Abbott, I'm in your award, but I'm not sure. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you for volunteering.
My name is Ricky Melanify, and I am a third-generation Sparks resident, and so I wanted to give back. I'm a proud graduate of Sparks High School. I'm a proud graduate of Sparks High School, class of '08, McDonald's. Part of the reason I got talked into applying, I did the Citizens Police Academy in 2018, and when I went to college, I got my degree in juvenile justice, and so I just kind of liked that course, and I thought it would be something that I could help with, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Good job, chief. Well, we're off in a great direction there, I love it.
Awesome.
All right, we're moving on to 9.2, and don't feel like you have to stick around, you know, because it gets boring from here out.
Welcome, Mr. Martini.
There he is. You know, sometimes the truth hurts.
It does.
It's the truth.
Well, no, they might be interested in this.
No, this actually redistricting should be. All right, 9.2, consideration, discussion of possible direction of the city manager's regarding redistricting options for future wards, including but not limited to scheduling of city council workshops to solicit input from the public in the city council on proposed redistricting alternatives, or selecting one of the redistricting alternatives proposed by staff. Mr. Martini?
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, and members of the council. I'm John Martini, your assistant city manager. I'm before you today to talk about our redistricting of our existing wards into new future wards, and the process we're going through, and seeking your direction with kind of which policy, which path do we want to take. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll start with just a little quick background. Our charter specifies that our ward boundaries must be redistrict if comes census time, when we get the population data in, if those ward boundaries are out by more than 5 percent, meaning comparing any one ward to another ward, that we must redistrict. Our staff did receive the 2020 census population data in early August, and I would point out that that's about four months later than when we received it during the last census, which would have been 2011, so a little bit of time compression here. So our staff has prepared an analysis, a first analysis, to say, with our given ward boundaries, where does the population sit? And I included the quick chart in your staff report, and you'll note that our wards are out of balance as far as population goes, and as an example, you can see in the table, I think the biggest difference that you can see is that when we compared Ward 2 to Ward 5, the population differences.
Thanks to see a visual.
It would be nice for the audience and the millions of people watching us on Facebook to be able to.
Oh, I'm sorry, Neil, I thought, what was that?
Those are magic slides. The chart with the.
I could have brought them. Might be a little hard to see from this distance, so.
And actually, I want to say thank you for doing that. That was a great visual aid to assist us in understanding where it sits and the different options that you brought to us.
I was just going to say, I know, give us that.
Can't carry a tuner in a bucket, though.
Oh, back off just one. Thank you, Julie.
So, as I was saying previously, this is the table that is included in your staff report. You use the left-hand column as your point of reference, so Ward 1, 2, 3, and 4, and as you move across the other columns, that is your direct comparison to any other ward. And as I noted, if you go to Ward 2 and then move all the way to the right and get to Ward 5, you'll see that it is, the difference is 24.6 percent, meaning Ward 2 is quite a bit smaller than Ward 5. So, we took this data, because now we know we're out of balance, so we've got to start looking at moving our existing ward boundary lines around. We use the criteria that's in Chapter 2 of the Sparks Municipal Code, which basically says, you guys have to, you know, you have to stay in your wards, we can't district you out of your ward. Wherever possible, we need to follow the boundaries of major arterial roadways or other prominent landmarks to contain the boundaries. Then, with that, kind of those rough criteria, a third, of course, that whatever lines we draw, we need to be within 5 percent. We did come up with, our staff was able to come up with three scenarios that meet the criteria, the biggest one being that the ward balances come within 5 percent. Those are attached to your staff report as figures 2, 3, and 4, I believe they're just called Options 1, 2, and 3. Additionally, the registrar of voters has asked the city of Sparks to provide final ward boundaries to their office by November 1st. Now, I had mentioned earlier in the background that we kind of got shorted by about four months this time around, so as staff looked through calendaring and a schedule to get us there, we can't meet, unfortunately, that ask of the registrar. So, staff has prepared a kind of order of battle or a plan to get us to final ward boundaries by the end of December, or end of November, which would allow us to get final ward boundaries to the registrar by early December. In that schedule, you'll note that we have included some, the potential for doing outreach at two workshops, which is kind of the crux of the question in front of you today that we're seeking direction on. So, we're proposing, our proposed schedule, we would have one workshop in the second week of October, somewhere between the 11th and the 15th. We do a second workshop that same day. We would get to work reviewing and revising the ward map alternatives based on your council input and what we'd heard from the public, the week of October 18 through the 22nd. Staff would prepare and submit the staff report for the first reading. This is, redistricting has to be done by ordinance, it's in our ordinance, so we've got a first and a second reading requirement on October 25th, which would get us to a first reading on November 8, 2021, and then, if everything goes well, we would have the public hearing and potentially a final decision on November 22nd, which would line us up to get these final ward boundaries to the registrar by early December. You have some alternatives for you today. Of course, staff is recommending the schedule I provided, including the public hearings, a chance to get out and listen to the public and see what they have to say. So, one alternative is that you provide that direction to the city manager to include those two workshops in the schedule. Alternatively, you could take one of the three scenarios and provide the city manager with direction for us to just get started on Scenario 1, 2, or 3, or you could provide other direction to the city manager today. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions from the council? Ms. Bybee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, when you said the city, the workshop, workshops, October, second week of October?
Yes.
And then, did you say you wanted to do both workshops the same day?
Well, it could be the same day, or certainly within that same week, probably pretty close to each other. We're on, just to get a chance for a second reading and a public hearing for you to approve new ward boundaries, we've got to get both of those public workshops in that week, or we will fall off this.
Well, and I agree, that week is good. I'm concerned if we did it on the same day, because if we had a daytime, we would be, people who are working and have normal work hours wouldn't be available to come, which we get that complaint sometimes because of our meeting time being middle of the afternoon. So, really, my preference would be to look at Workshop 1 and 2, maybe two days that same week, early evening, to accommodate the public, and I think the public workshops are absolutely, you know, critical, and I believe the mayor had talked about, and in our briefing, we talked about doing workshops in two different parts of town, so doing one, you know, the north and south, so whatever those locations are, the two different neighborhoods, so we would draw different people, so I think that's really important as well. And then, can you, for everyone else who doesn't know, I mean, what the criteria, so the criteria, they have to keep the council members in their ward, which is a given. The wards have to be contiguous, so you can't take like a square out of my ward and put it over in Donald's, because it's not even close, so it's contiguous when you draw the lines, and that you try to keep on major arterial roads, so it doesn't look like you've got a full, you know, mishmash of how you're drawing the boundaries. So, those are the three criteria, correct?
That is correct, council. You got them all, that's right out of Chapter 2 of SMC. Yeah, to your point on ward boundaries need to be contiguous, it's a rule so that we don't grab a block, it doesn't allow us to gerrymander or, you know, cherry pick, so they kind of have to grow organically, kind of centered, not necessarily centered, but certainly including the residents of the councilperson representing that ward.
Okay, the only other thing I would ask is, do we have demographic information that, I know that wasn't here when I had my briefing, are we looking at kind of at least considering what the demographics are to the extent possible when we are doing the redistricting?
So, as of last week, our data guru, Nicholas Connolly, over in GIS, has been able to start extracting some demographic data out of the census. We do have a rough draft of that data, it is being reviewed by staff right now. I'm hoping to have my portion of that review done this week, and then I'll update the city manager as to what we're seeing in that data. So, yes, we're working on it, is it ready for us to share with all of you yet? Not quite.
Anything else? Mr. Dare?
On your note, on Councilwoman Bybee's note, would it be wise to have one in the day and then one in the evening, forsake of those who work, some people work evenings, and so, if that's the case, so I do like the idea of having it on two separate days, in a sense, it gives people an opportunity if they're traveling or something. It is hard, we're doing our best to keep the community involved, so I think that's fantastic that we do that, but if you're going to have it on a separate day, I just think having one morning or midday for those who work at night and the opposite, that would be the only answer. Yeah, I was going to say, so it just give an opportunity in case someone's stuck, I'm like, wow, so, but I think this is great, and I look forward to hearing the feedback.
Thank you, appreciate your comments.
Mr. Anderson?
So, first, I want to say I agree with the other council members that have spoke. I like the idea of going to public with the two meetings. As far as locations, I know you guys are trying to pick some central locations, have you thought through, you know, Sparks High, Reed High kind of thing, or where are you thinking about going with that?
So, the conversations that I've been having with the city manager, just, we were originally thinking potentially at the Rec Center on Richard's Way. In our conversations, we've discussed Sparks High School. Where we're having a little difficulty is when we look at the northern end of town, there's not a lot of venues out there that can hold a number of folks. Maybe the Red Hawk Event Center comes to mind as an available space, which would give us a location up to the north, and then something down in the central core part of Sparks. So, that's our thoughts to date, until we get this direction, whichever way the council goes today, then we'll start working on logistics.
And then, just to follow up on the demographic side, so when do you expect that we'll be seeing the demographics?
Councilman Anderson, to be honest with you, I don't have an estimate yet, we're trying to go as fast as we can. The first cut has been done by Community Services Director Ornellis with our team, he has sent that to me for one more set of eyes, and then I would like the opportunity to brief the city manager on how the data is that we have it today. It may not necessarily be the best way to convey that information to you, those are the issues I need to work through, so I would like to have that done in the next couple weeks.
Mr. Abbott?
I definitely like, like Councilman Anderson said about Sparks High, and I like Reed High School as a location, you know, Red Hawk's great, it's just, it's all the way out there, it's just the furthest north, you know, Reed's more of a centralized in that area, so personally, I like both high schools as locations for options. I do get what you're saying, I think it was Councilman Dare about the morning and afternoon meetings, I just, it's going to be hard, you know, if we pick daytime down south and then evenings north, we're going to alienate the evening people down south. I'm not sure how we can accomplish, because people down south are, you know, even in my own life, driving out to myself, I'll give them a golden eagle, I complain, a 20-minute drive, and so, I don't know. It is something that, you know.
We're getting some real big city problems here, aren't we?
I'm just saying, you know, we will alienate people, though.
Remember back in 1980.
I'm just saying, it's going to be hard if we want to pick daytime down south and then not daytime out north, and I don't, I think we need to make sure it's all equal between the two.
I do have a question. Can I follow up on that? So, we're not limiting the people who come, whether you're living in the north or south or east or west, whatever part of town, we give them two options, and whatever works with their life that day, schedule-wise, we'd have two different days, two different times, and anybody can come, it's open, correct? It's open to the whole community, either one, it's not by geography.
Absolutely.
Okay.
It would be a noticed, open, public workshop.
Okay, yeah, and I think that's how we accommodate, and then people get a choice, and, oh, I'm working that day, but I can come that evening. Thanks.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to agree with Councilman Dare that I think a daytime and an evening, especially with people's work schedules and things like that, and two separate days, so I do agree with that, so, and I concur with the rest of the comments, thank you.
So, kind of a follow-up on Councilman Abbott's comment about the two locations, my opinion would be the high schools, because both those are on bus routes, so if you don't have a car, you actually could take a bus to those locations.
Okay. We may have to have three meetings, John, one daytime and two evenings, and that's kind of what I'm thinking, to make it maybe one daytime at Central, and then two evenings, one in the north, one in the south. I think we want to hit all of our constituents and make sure that they have ample opportunity to weigh in on this subject, because it will be, some of them will be getting a new representative with the redistricting, and being able to weigh in on that, I think, is a big deal. Someone may not like Mayor Lawson too much and not want to be in his district, even though I don't have a district. Yeah. So, anyways, I think that, do you have enough direction, Mr. Manager?
I would appreciate a specific motion, and if you want us to do three separate public outreach meetings, we're happy to do it, but please tell us with specificity in the motion, what you'd like us to do.
Bybee, you want to give that a shot?
Yeah. I'm going to move that we direct the city manager to schedule at least two workshops for staff to receive input from the public and the city council on the proposed redistricting alternatives.
Okay, I'm looking for a second. Ms. Vanderwell?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion by the council? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously with two workshops. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving on, 9.3. Consideration, discussion of possible approval of an agreement AC 5808 between Med, Trans, Casual Reno, PLLC, DBA Well Care Medical, and Behavioral Clinic, the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, and Washoe County relating to the provision of funds for the Community Triage Center, with the City of Sparks financial contribution being in the amount of $115,000. Mr. Ornellis?
Thank you, Mayor Lawson, members of the city council. I am Armonio Ornellis, the Community Services Director.
I am Armando Ornalis, the Community Services Director. So as the agenda title indicates, we are looking for you to approve funding to continue operating the Community Triage Center. That agreement basically provides for the provision of care to people who need detox from alcohol or other substances or are undergoing psychiatric episodes, and they can be admitted at the Triage Center. Usually, they are picked up and taken there, provided they are not suffering a medical emergency. So just in terms of some background, in 2005, the Nevada Legislature provided for the creation of a drop-off Triage Center in Washoe County. The legislation stipulates that the state of Nevada will provide up to one-third of the funding, up to half a million dollars a year, provided that the region's hospitals and the local governments in Washoe County provide matching amounts. Subsequently, the Community Triage Center opened on the campus of the Community Assistance Center in downtown Reno in 2008. It was operated by West Care Nevada, which is a different organization than Well Care. And West Care operated that Triage Center on that campus until April of 2018, when some of you may recall they appropriately closed. The City of Reno subsequently issued a RFQ, and Well Care was selected to operate the CTC and entered into the first agreement with the local governments, as well as separate agreements with the hospitals and the state. And they've been operating it ever since. The most recent agreement terminated on June 30th of this current calendar year, and so this is essentially a renewal. So pursuant to this agreement, the three local governments would provide funding in the amount of half a million dollars, and the City of Sparks portion would be $115,000. The agreement would be retroactive to July 1 and would run through the end of the fiscal year on June 30th of 2022. The city's approved FY '22 budget included $90,000 for the CTC. That was essentially an estimate at that time. The allocation, if you will, of cost to the City of Sparks is $115,000, and the city manager is recommending that increase to that amount. So that concludes my presentation. Staff is recommending approval, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Questions from the council. Mr. Dare?
Yes, with that center, have we heard anything about the potential sale of that, of where all that is right now? And so, in us standing with these guys and doing this, I mean, are we supporting something that potentially would sell and then they have to find a place, or do we know any of that information?
I do not have any of that information currently. I believe that, you know, if they needed to relocate from the campus of the Community Assistance Center, if that were to sell, I don't know, that a sale is imminent, certainly. You know, potentially, you know, one option would be to locate it on the Nevada campus. I know that there are some other options being considered for future years, but this would be, this is intended to continue to, you know, be able to operate this, the CTC to offer this service, to be able to address the needs of this population that, you know, otherwise impacts our jails and our hospitals, until some other solution is found.
Yeah, it's very important, and obviously, I'm not trying to assume that we don't accommodate this, but I would ask that we get something back as soon as we can, just to understand what it is that we're awaiting, especially in lieu of what happened in 2018, which, I'm going to that, but that happened quickly. And so we don't want any of that, obviously, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I think maybe, certainly through the manager, that may be a topic that can be addressed and brought by the C-HAB.
Do you mind, do you mind if staff turns around and comes with information for that, please?
Understood.
Okay. Anyone else from the council? All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve agreement AC 5808 between Medtrans Kisel Reno, PLLC, DBA Well Care Medical and Behavioral Clinic, the City of Reno, the City of Sparks, and Washoe County relating to the provision of funds for the Community Triage Center with the City of Sparks financial contribution in the amount of $115,000.
Mr. Anderson?
I will second the motion.
I've got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Armando. All right, nine point four. Consideration discussion and possible approval of impact fee credit, number 26, AC 5809, between the City of Sparks and Toll Nevada Limited Partnership, providing $638,877 in impact fee credits that may be used to pay for future regional parks and recreation impact fees within the impact fee service area number one. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, John Erickson, city engineer. Where are we at, Julie?
Let me just open that.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
This is an impact fee credit agreement in impact fee service area number one in northern Sparks. This is going to be with Toll Brothers. They are proposing to construct approximately 7,218 lineal feet, thanks, Jim, of regional trail. This agreement will provide them with provisional credits, so the dollar amount that you see in the agenda item is 85% of the total cost that, or the cost estimate that they provided. City staff has reviewed the cost estimate and is in agreement with the dollar amount. Again, the dollar amount that's going to be in the agreement is 85% of the total construction cost. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. A couple of our wards are real close to each other, so trying to keep an eye on, whose ward is that?
Guess what? They're going to change.
That's my ward. I move to approve the impact fee credit agreement number 26, AC 5809, between the City of Sparks and Toll Nevada Limited Partnership, providing $638,877 in impact fee credits that may be used for future regional parks and recreation impact fees within impact fee service area number one.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. All right, we're moving on to nine point seven. First reading, bill number 2786.
Nope.
Did I forget the variance? I should pay attention to this and not what my notes say. Okay, nine point five. Consideration discussion and possible approval of the variance from Sparks Municipal Code Section 15 dot 11 dot 031 through 15 dot 11 dot 03, 0350, floodways for development of fenced parking areas within regulatory floodways located at O'Purina Way, Sparks, Nevada.
Thank you, Mayor, and its council members, John Erickson, city engineer. Titan Electric is proposing to develop a vacant piece of property at Zero Purina Way. Where it is located is to the south of Drake Street. Here's Purina Way, and it's to the north of, off of Spice Island Drive. It's currently a vacant parcel that, it does kind of cause some issues with our public work maintenance folks in the police department, just due to the fact that we get, you know, folks that shouldn't be camping out there, camped out on the parcel. City staff has met with Titan Electric. They've brought onboard expert engineering firms to do a no-rise analysis, as well as an emergency action plan, as well as a grading plan for the site. We have reviewed the analysis that was developed for Titan Electric. We didn't have any issues with the analysis. We also sent the analysis over to the Chucky River Flood Management Authority for review, as well as FEMA Region 9. Their staff looked at it as well. They didn't see any issues with respect to the analysis, so there's no impact to the surrounding area. There is a provision in our Spark Comprehensive Plan, it's policy RC 18. It basically states that you're not supposed to be developing anything in the floodway without a variance. There is a stipulation in that comprehensive, the, excuse me, that policy, that they're supposed to have a two-to-one open space ratio, because this is going to be a parking lot, and those structures are going to be built in place. We felt that that two-to-one variance could be varied with the variance. Want me to go through the analysis, Wes? Now I'm going to read the analysis, it's going to take some time. There's about three pages of analysis here, so if you want to check out, you're more than welcome to.
I'm here to learn.
This would be the boring part of the program.
You know you're in trouble when you have to put the cheaters on. Okay. For the Sparks City Council to approve this variance request, the council must consider three fundamental issues, 11 standards, and four findings of fact. The following analysis addresses each of these issues. Responses to applicable Sparks Municipal Code fundamental issues, standards, and findings of fact are primarily addressed in the documents provided to the city, which include House Moran No-Rise Analysis and Flood Response Emergency Action Plan and Odyssey Engineering's Civil Design Drawings. So under section Fundamental Issues to Consider, changing the floodway in a manner that would result in increased flood water depth for adjacent properties. Response: The no-rise analysis used the Chucky River Flood Management Authority's regional physical map revision, 2D grass model as the platform for all hydraulic and hydraulic modeling for this project. Modeling results irrefutably demonstrate the proposed storage yard will not change the floodway and result in increased floodwater depth and velocities for adjacent properties. Section Two, the potential for stored materials be swept away by floodwaters causing damage and blockage downstream. Response: The EAP provides 20 floor contact information, material, stockpile removal procedures, and other information to ensure timely and safe operations during flood conditions. Section Three, the potential for other flood debris to become trapped in fencing constructed around the site. The proposed response, the proposed storage yard will include the installation of a chain link security fencing around the north, east, and west perimeter of property, and will tie into existing fencing on the south property boundary. As shown in the no-rise analysis, trapped debris will not affect the floodwater conveyance or elevations due to the location of the property relative to nearby buildings. Section B, Sparks Municipal's Sections 15 dot 11 dot 034 outlines 11 standards that must be considered by the city council. One, the danger that materials may be swept onto other lands or injuring others. Response: Stored materials and equipment will be removed from the site as described in the EAP submitted by the applicant. Section Two, the danger of life and property due to flooding or erosion damage. Response: No impacts to life or property will occur because the proposed site development, which is only an at-grade storage yard for equipment and materials that will be relocated outside of the floodplain floodway prior to any flood event. The applicant will be responsible for erosion and sediment control practices during construction. There will be no erosion or sediment control issues post-construction. Section Three, the susceptibility of the proposed facility and its contents of the flood damage and the effect of such damage on existing individual owners and future owners of the property. The proposed development is an at-grade storage yard only for equipment and materials that would be relocated prior to any flood event. There are no anticipated damages to the current or future owners of the property. Section Four, the importance of the services provided by the proposed facility to the community. Response: The proposed yard allows for the owner to effectively manage their business inventory in the electrical service industry. Titan Electric provides repair and maintenance services for public and private facilities across the city, as well as the greater Chucky Meadows. Section Five, the necessity to facilitate a waterfront location where applicable. Response: Not applicable. While the site is located within the regulatory floodway, it is not adjacent to any waterfront. Section Six, the availability of alternative locations for the proposed, or for the proposed use, which are not subject to flooding or erosion damage. Response: The availability of alternate storage locations in industrial zoning is very limited within Sparks. No other sites with the proper zoning could be located by the applicant that are not subject to similar constraints associated with floodway or floodplain regulations. Section Seven, the compatibility of the proposed use with existing and anticipated development. Response: The subject property is located within industrial area and is fully compatible with existing and anticipated development. Section Eight, the relationship of the proposed use to the Comprehensive Plan and Floodplain Management Program for that area. Response: The site is located within the industrial area that accommodates the use of the development based on the no-rise analysis and EAP prepared for the project. The proposed development within the floodway will not cause adverse impact to upstream or downstream properties. Section Nine, the safety of access to the property in time of flood for ordinary and emergency vehicles. Response: Direct access is available to the property and the facilities from Purina Way via Spice Islands Drive from the south and East Drake Street from the north. Section Ten, the expanded height, velocity, duration, rate of rise, and sediment transport of the floodwaters expected at the site. Response: The floodwaters' depth, velocity, duration, rate of rise, and sediment transport will not change from the current condition due to the proposed development. The velocities associated with the floodwaters' depth at the proposed development are low due to the backwater conditions at the site. The density of existing buildings in the immediate vicinity prevents erosive velocities from occurring at the site. Section Eleven, the cost of providing governmental services during and after flood conditions, including maintenance and repair of public utilities and facilities such as sewer, gas, electric water system, and street and bridges. The proposed development is an at-grade storage yard only for equipment materials that will be relocated prior to any flood event. There is no change in cost for providing governmental services before and after floods anticipated with the proposed development. Section C, pursuant to Sparks Municipal Code Section 20 dot 05 dot 012, in order to approve the variance, the city council must make four findings of fact. One, there is exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to the property involved that generally do not apply to other properties classified in the same zoning district. Response: This finding of fact can be made in that although properties of a similar nature might exist within the industrial district, the location of the property, access to public roadways, and the size of the parcel are extraordinary circumstances for the subject site. The strict interpretation and enforcement of the specified provisions would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by the owners of other properties classified in the same zoning district. Response: This finding of fact can be made in that other properties within the floodway enjoy storage uses, outdoor storage is allowed within the industrial district via conditional use permit, which the applicant will be required to obtain prior to development of the site. Three, that the granting of the variance will not constitute or grant a special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties classified in the same zoning district. Response: Response. This finding of fact can be made that other properties within the industrial zoning district have been granted use permits for outdoor storage uses. Outdoor storage is allowed within the industrial district via conditional use permit, which the applicant will be required to obtain prior to the development of the site. Section four. That the granting of the variance will not substantially impair the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injured properties or improvements within the vicinity. Response. This finding of fact can be made based upon staff's opinion that the development of the site in conjunction with the No-Rise Analysis and the EAP will not cause adverse impacts to the floodway. No impairment of public health, safety, or welfare, or material damage to adjacent properties or improvements is expected to occur with the development. So approval of the variance would allow utilization of the site for parking or subject additional entitlement approvals. Outdoor storage thereby modifying applicability of policy RC eighteen in the Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Policy RC eighteen generally prohibits development within the FEMA Regulation Zone AE floodways. Properties located in the built environment west of Larkin Circle to Gillette Way, south of I eighty may propose new development and/or expansions within identified regulation of Zone AE floodways by obtaining a flood variance prior to or concurrent with the entitlement submittal, demonstrating a two to one ratio of non-constrained area is preserved as open space for every constrained area that is developed. Because the applicant proposal is not to develop the site with structures, but to use it for parking and outdoor storage, the provisions to preserve the site as open space at a two to one ratio is not applicable to the proposed use. Should the applicant request construction of structures at, at this site, a new variance cemental would be required and the requirements to preserve the site at a two to one ratio of non-constrained land would apply. That concludes my presentation.
Questions from the council?
Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. My only question is, 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 uh, the lot is currently a dirt lot?
Yes.
So are-
It's, it's got, you know, brush on there.
Okay, okay. And all they're gonna do is move equipment and use it for storage, so they're not going to concrete or asphalt it?
No, they, they will have just a little bit of, of, of concrete work in, at the driveway coming in, just kind of keep material from being drug out onto the street. But, but they're proposing to put grindings down. And, and actually, the site gets a little bit lower so that it can be drained properly.
Terrific. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Mr. Erickson?
That was a, that was a lot of reading for a, a couple acre parking lot, but thank you. I move to approve the variance from Sparks Municipal Code Section fifteen dot eleven dot zero three one through fifteen dot eleven dot zero three five zero. Floodways for development of a fenced parking area within the regulatory floodway located at Zero Purina Way, Sparks, Nevada.
Second.
Ms. Vanderwell, have a second. Any further discussion? Sorry. Seeing none, please vote. Yeah. Motion carries unanimously. I'm gonna move on to item nine point seven. First reading. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading of Bill number two seven eight six to rezone real property approximately two point three six acres in size, located at one one four six Prater Way and one 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 five G Street from PF Public Facilities to MUD Mixed Use District, PCN two one dash zero 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 five. A public hearing will be held and Bill two seven eight six will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Sparks City Council on Monday, October eleventh, twenty twenty-one at two P M in the chambers of the Sparks City Council Legislative Building.
Okay. Move on to, uh, public hearing action items unrelated to planning and zoning, ten point one. Public hearing. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the submittal of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Consortium Annual Action Plan for the federal fiscal year. Over to the next page. Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. Rundle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now for the exciting part of the meeting, right? Uh, Jim Rundle, city planner, here to present on the annual action plan. But this item asks the city council to approve our AAP, that's the annual action plan, for the next year. This is something that the city council considers every year, and we're here back in front of you to have the council's consideration. This is a requirement of, of HUD, Housing and Urban Development, to review and propose how you review and propose how you're going to spend the CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant money that the city receives. We are currently in year two of a five-year plan of how to spend that money. Sparks has one point four million in CDBG money for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. Typically, the city council has leveraged the CDBG funding to address housing needs, public services, and homeless prevention. Funding activities that are included in this annual action plan are twenty-five thousand dollars to support fair housing activities, a hundred and fifty thousand for planning and, and administrative activities, a hundred and ten thousand to support the emergency shelter, and associated services at the Nevada Care's campus and Our Place. Additionally, nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars are included for pedestrian improvements. Council member Abbott, you've seen a lot of pedestrian improvements in your, your ward. And additionally, ninety thousand dollars for housing rehabilitation of programs in the city of Sparks. Mr. Mayor's staff is requesting that the city council approve the annual action plan and submit it to HUD for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And that concludes my presentation.
Questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Vanderwell? Yes? Public hearing, that's right. Hey, I'm having a off day, aren't I? This is a public hearing? Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Well, we're gonna close public hearing, bring it back to the dais. Ms. Vanderwell?
I move to approve submittal of the Community Development Block Grant and Home Consortium Annual Action Plan for federal fiscal year twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mr. Abbott?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. Ten point two, public hearing, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of submittal of the city of Sparks Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the federal fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. Mr. Rundle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Jim Rundle, city pla- city planner, and as you just read, the paper is what is outlined up there, the Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. This is something we also do once a year that the city council receives. It is a requirement of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to receive CDBG funding. Next year, we would come in front of you and report on what we just talked about in the last item, item ten point one. In twenty, uh, in, Sparks received six hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars in CDB, in new CDBG funds. A hundred and twelve thousand dollars went to the Community Assistance Center. And the city council this past year also supplemented that with five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars from the general fund to support the Community Assistance Center. The city council had approved spending a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars on planning and administrative activities, a hundred and two thousand dollars on single-family residential deferred load, deferred loan programs. We only had one loan last year. The COVID impacts and staffing impacts reduced our ability to, to, uh, further that program. And then we had twenty thousand dollars of emergency repair grants. Those are things like someone needs a, a roof all of a sudden, or a heater all of a sudden, we're able to process something like that. And again, we just talked about in the last item, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of pedestrian improvements that was approved. That was not spent, so we are able to move that forward to this coming fiscal year so we can roll it over and potentially do a bigger project. We didn't have the capacity to get that money spent in the last year. Also, as Commissioner Vanderwell is familiar with, the Washoe County Home Consortium receives CDBG money. This year, the city of Sparks did not get a project in the city of Sparks, but previously, we did get a, a, a project, and there is now one under construction in the city of Sparks. I believe it's for thirty-six units, and I'm calling it the Greyhaven Project over off of Greyhaven Lane. So that is a home consortium project that Sparks is receiving in the corporate boundaries of the city of Sparks. Uh, Mr. Mayor's staff is asking that the city council approve the report so that we can submit that to HUD for compliance with the regulations surrounding CDBG.
Okay, questions from the council? Ms. Vanderwell?
Uh, Mr. Rundle, on the homeowner housing rehabilitation monies, how is that disseminated out to the community, advertised? How do homeowners know that that money's available to assist them?
I'm gonna let Director Ornellis speak to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, Armando Ornellis, the Community Services Director. Councilmember Vanderwell, mayor, if I may. So historically, we have advertised that program through a number of venues. You know, we have done outreach through various organizations, we've done some advertising. Ms. Duals assisted us with getting the word out, et cetera. As Mr. Rundle alluded to, we are, we have a vacancy in terms of our housing specialist position currently. So temporarily, we are on hold with regard to that program. We are, you know, to be candid, looking at everything we're doing with regard to the CDPG dollars and housing programs, and we will be making some recommendations to the city manager with regard to how, how to proceed in that. But if we resume the housing rehab programs, then, you know, all of those things that we've done in the past, plus hopefully some new things, we would, we would resume.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Okay, this is a public hearing, we'll open it up to the public for comment right now. Anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve this middle of the city Sparks Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for federal fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one to the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item eleven point one. Also a public hearing, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of a request to amend the tentative Plan Development Handbook for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, generally located north of the Kylie Ranch South Plan Development and east of the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, south of Lazy Five Regional Park and along Pyramid Highway, Sparks, Nevada, on the side of approximately eight hundred and seventy-four point two acres in size and the new urban district, zoning district, to permit multifamily residential use on the AC arterial commercial land use category and associated charges. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jonathan Cummins from the Planning Division. As you stated, Mr. Mayor, this is a request to amend the tentative handbook for the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, more specifically to add multifamily as a permitted use in the arterial commercial land use area. So this exhibit shows you the entirety of the eight hundred and seventy-four acre Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. Just for a little bit of context, Pyramid Highway runs along the western side of Kylie Ranch North. This is where Sparks Boulevard turns into Highland Ranch Parkway. To the north of Kylie Ranch North is the Lazy Five Regional Park, as well as the Stonebrook Plan Development. As we approach the northern city limits, to the northeast of Kylie Ranch North is Pioneer Meadows, just north of Vista here. And south of Kylie Ranch North is Kylie Ranch South. The original tentative handbook for Kylie Ranch North was approved in two thousand and four. Uh, and as you'll recall, it is relatively unique in our planned developments in the city of Sparks in that it was approved and adopted as a tentative handbook, which is then approved in phases, each phase requiring a final handbook. So it's a good idea, I think, to get a sense of the different land use categories throughout Kylie Ranch North, since one of them will be modified in this request. So the green around the outside of the site of, obviously, is the open space area, which involves over twenty percent of Kylie Ranch North in total. And then a first point of reference here, just to give you an idea of where we are, these are the school sites, the bright blue ones in the middle here. So this is Sky Ranch Middle School on the east, Bohatch Elementary School on the west. And so to run through quickly the different land uses, again, the purple at the north is the Business Park Land Use Area. This is where the Bolimo Manufacturing Facility is, if you're familiar with that. And the different shades of yellow throughout the site, a little bit here in the north, but then also mostly in the east and down here in the south are the different, uh, different shades of yellow representing different densities of residential developments. So some multifamily phases, some single-family phases, and then several are mixes of both. So as we move closer to the pyramid corridor, away from that residential emphasis there, the maroon shaded parcels here are mixed use. These brighter red ones here are community commercial along the east of Pyramid Highway. And then there are five villages in brown, most of them along the, the western side of Pyramid Highway here. These are the sites in question in today's request. These are the phases, or excuse me, the villages that are classified as arterial commercial. So again, specifically to, to call out what the request is today. Request before you was to add multifamily as a permitted use in the arterial commercial land use area, and that's the only change to the handbook requested today. Uh, in working with the applicant, staff did, um, sort of land in the, in, sort of, in, in, met them halfway here and agreed that only fifty percent of the forty-two acres of arterial commercial could be allowed for this use, which means that just over twenty-one acres could be developed hypothetically as multifamily development. And a point worth making here is that no change to the total number of residential units in Kylie Ranch North would be changed here today. So that number remains the same. So there are seven findings required in order to make a change to a tentative Plan Development Handbook. Finding A. Asst that you consider consistency with objectives of the plan development. Since its initial adoption, the language of this particular tentative handbook emphasized neighborhoods complemented by commercial development. So the current request is consistent with that goal by providing opportunities to develop a mix of housing. Finding B. Asst that you evaluate whether there's been a departure from the approved densities, uses, or regulations. This request does not depart from those established criteria, obviously, except for the twenty-one acres that could be used for multifamily residential, which previously was not allowed. The request would change the allowed uses in just that one land use area. And discussed in the previous finding, it does so in a way that conforms with the overall vision of the tentative handbook. Finding C. Asst that you consider whether there's been an effect to the ratio of residential to non-residential uses. Proposed amendment does not depart from the approved mix of uses. The twenty acres that with this request could be used for multifamily represents a two point five percent shift in the overall acreage in Kylie Ranch North that could be used for residential development. So that number was previously four hundred and eight acres. With this request, it would become four hundred and twenty-nine acres of residential development throughout the entirety of Kylie Ranch North. Finding D. Asst you to evaluate the effect on required open space. Over twenty-one percent of Kylie Ranch North is open space. That includes a hundred and thirty-eight acres of park and formal open space areas, as well as forty-seven acres of additional open space at neighborhood entries, streetscapes, tree areas, trail network landscaping, and project landscaping. The current request would not affect that. Finding E. Asst that you evaluate the effect on services, recreation, and visual enjoyment. No development standards are changed in this request. Network of parks and open space will remain consistent with what has been previously approved for recreational use as well as visual enjoyment. And there remains a chapter in the tentative handbook devoted to requirements for infrastructure and services. Finding F. Asst that you evaluate the effect on the relationship with the neighborhood. Uh, I think it's important to think of, obviously, neighborhood in this context is a, is a relative term. This is an eight hundred and seventy-four acre plan development. As I stated before, when we looked at the map, the surrounding areas include Kylie Ranch South, Pioneer Meadows, Stonebrook Plan Developments. These are all relatively large plan developments as well. They each do share that vision of a mix of residential use- They each do share that vision of a mix of residential uses that are complemented by commercial development as well. So this proposal would not affect that relationship with those surrounding neighborhoods. Finding G asks that you evaluate whether the public interest and reliance of residents and owners on the integrity of the plan has been affected. Prior to this request, multifamily was not included in the approved uses allowed in arterial commercial. But with that in mind, the amendment does bring a greater diversity of housing, which would provide a mix of land uses, commercial and residential, to the Pyramid Corridor and its future activity centers. The amendment to the plan would not take away from owners and residents' reliance on that aspect of the plan. Rather, it would work toward achieving the vision of the plan as it was approved with its stated emphasis on neighborhoods complemented by commercial development. With that, the Planning Commission has forwarded a recommendation of approval to the City Council, and the applicant's representative is here today as well, and I'll be glad to take questions.
Questions from the council. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, could you help us understand the fiscal impact to the city as the plan stands now versus what is proposed?
So in making this request, the applicant did have a consultant conduct a formal fiscal impact analysis, which would assume, one of the main assumptions would be that if there were twenty-one acres allowed now to be residential, that means that twenty-one acres hypothetically would no longer be available for commercial development. The overall impact of that set of assumptions was that there would be relatively the same level of revenues generated for the city in terms of what would be collected in the general fund, as well as to the road impacts funds. And in their ultimate findings were that there would be a deficit to the road fund and a surplus to the general fund overall. So in speaking toward, in speaking to the question about the overall fiscal impacts, they are, as would be with the assumptions related to commercial development there, positive to the city overall. So whether they would be different if it had remained the same, we don't have that data necessarily, but we do see that there is a, an overall surplus to the city fiscally.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Dare.
And could you mind just also visiting a little bit on traffic? I mean, obviously Pyramid Highway is a big question that we're asked all the time. So anytime we talk about doing anything, everyone's all, ah, what did we do? Are you even paying attention? Can you tell us how we're paying attention, please?
I can say that the areas where arterial commercial, these are all, as you pointed out, adjacent to the Pyramid Highway. The city engineer might want to speak more directly to details about what we anticipate on the Pyramid Highway, but there's also the intersection of Highland Ranch, which turns in the Sparks Boulevard. These are areas where traffic is an issue, access to the highway is an issue. Those details were presented to us in the request, and the changes to allow a multifamily traffic levels to any or all of these parts of Pyramid Highway or the Sparks Boulevard intersection would be relative to what would be anticipated in commercial. So overall, the impacts are not necessarily any greater than would if those land uses were to remain specifically just for commercial.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open this to the public. This is a public hearing, anyone in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dais, looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
Yes. I move to approve the amendment of the tentative development handbook for the Kylie Ranch Plan Development generally located north of the Kylie Ranch South Plan Development, east of Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, south of Lazy Five Regional Park, and along Pyramid Highway, Sparks, Nevada, on a site approximately eight hundred and seventy-four point two acres in size in the NUD New Urban District zoning district to permit multifamily residential uses in the AC arterial commercial land use category and associate changes, adopting findings PDA through PDG and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Anderson.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, you got a motion and a second, any further discussion by council? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're gonna go back to nine point six. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Ten. Can't hardly see that. On a side approximately twenty-nine point three-three acres, and the site is located generally southeast of intersection of Pyramid and Sparks Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, APN zero eight-three dash eight-three-zero dash four-five and eight-three zero eight-three eight-three-zero five-six in New Urban District Kylie Ranch North zoning district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Jonathan Cummins from the Planning Division. This is, this item is a request for the approval of a final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Ten. As you saw in the previous item, the area outlined in blue is the entire eight hundred and seventy-four acre Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. The area outlined in red at the southeastern corner of Sparks Boulevard and Pyramid Highway here is the Phase Ten area. So as I stated in the previous item, Kylie Ranch North was established through a tentative handbook, which has to be approved in phases, each phase requiring a final handbook, this being the tenth of those. This area would govern what is called out in the tentative handbook land use map as Villages Twenty-nine A, Twenty-nine B, and Village Thirty. And those areas are outlined in black here. To give you an idea of the sort of mix of uses here, the two maroon shaded colors here are mixed use, and the northernmost village in brown is the arterial commercial site. So the entirety of Phase Ten is twenty-nine point three-three acres. Of those twenty-nine point three-three acres, twenty point nine-three would be designated as mixed use, and those are those two villages here on the southern part. Five acres would be arterial commercial, would be this part here. And three point four acres are designated as open space, and that would be the sites you see in green here, part of it being connected to the Orgish Linear Park, which runs the entirety of the site. So with that breakdown of acreages in mind, again, the majority of the Phase Ten site is designated as mixed use, but as was just approved in the previous item, both of these land use categories allow for residential. One, obviously, more limited than the other, arterial commercial only allows multifamily residential. The mixed use category allows both single and multifamily residential uses. But on the other side of both of those categories, I have a few slides to give you an idea of what could be allowed through, on the, excuse me, the commercial uses that are allowed by right, but also through conditional use permits. So I'll give you a quick list of each of those. So by right in the mixed use area, office, gym, retail, convenience store, medical office, personal service, restaurants, and restricted gaming are allowed. Through conditional use permit, which is a public hearing item which is heard and decided by the Planning Commission, some other uses allowed there would be drive-throughs, lodging of less than two hundred rooms, manufacturing, churches, and civic facilities. And on the arterial commercial side, uses permitted by right include bars, fast food restaurants with drive-throughs, home improvement center slash hardware stores, liquor stores, convenience store, gas stations, as well as mini storages. These are uses, again, permitted by right, adopted in the tentative handbook as used is allowed in the various categories throughout Kylie Ranch North. And through conditional use permit, arterial commercial uses include department stores, wholesale stores, entertainment venues, to include bowling alleys and movie theaters, as well as lodging of more than two hundred rooms. So to the criteria outlined in the Sparks Municipal Code, to adopt a final handbook within a tentative handbook area requires that the following criteria be met. So the first two points, the proposed final handbook must not vary residential density nor vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential uses. The proposed final handbook contains standards related to these two criteria that would mirror what's been approved previously at the tentative handbook stage. The density would not change, uses and ratio of uses remain the same, because again, the mixed use and arterial designations were previously established at the tentative handbook. To number three, proposed final handbooks must not involve a reduction of open space. The open space provided in the Phase Ten area is three point four acres, as was anticipated at the last update of the tentative handbook as well. No change to that is being requested today. To points four and five, proposed final handbooks must not substantially increase floor areas for non-residential use, nor substantially increase ground areas for or heights of buildings. Again, no increase to these or any other development standards have been proposed in this request. They remain identical to what was approved at the tentative handbook previously. Planning Commission is forwarding a recommendation of approval for this item. Applicant's representative is here today, and I'll be glad to take questions.
Question from the council. All right, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Dare.
Thank you, sir. I move to approve the final plan development handbook for Kylie Ranch North Phase Ten at site approximately twenty-nine point three-three acres in size, located generally southeast of the intersection of Pyramid Way and Sparks Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, APNs S zero eight-three eight-three-zero dash four-five and zero eight-three dash eight-three-zero dash five-six in the NUD New Urban District Kylie Ranch North zoning district as it is in substantial compliance with the Kylie Ranch North tentative handbook as set forth in the staff report. Thank you.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. And motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on to comments from the public. Anyone in the public wishing to make a comment at this time? Madam Clerk, do we have any cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Announcement from the mayor, city council, city manager. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you, Mayor Lawson.
Anyone on the city council?
Yes, sir.
Of course, Mr. Dare.
Yes, I just want to, it was a big weekend, a lot going on, but we did get to go, and between the Honor Flight and yesterday, they had a vigil. And I just want to say that a lot of great things happened in our community for our veterans. And I just encourage everybody to make sure we pause. This is a season when a lot of our Gold Star families do take a moment and families surround them, and they just remember their loss. And so with one of those things that their loss many times has created the freedoms we have. And so what's happening with our veterans is incredible. So if you know a veteran around you, if you know a family that's hurting, I think it's crucial that as a Sparks community, we take the time to recognize that. So thank you.
And Ms. Vanderwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to share that I will be doing a community cleanup at Opio Park this Saturday from ten to two with the help from our Public Works Department of the City of Sparks. So I'd like to thank them. So if anybody would like to come out and help clean up some of the tagging, I greatly appreciate it.
Mr. Anderson.
Along the cleanup side, just wanted to say, Keep Trucking Meadows Beautiful had their community cleanup this last week, and as always, it was an awesome event. I want to thank my fellow council members that joined me out there cleaning. And want to give a shout out to REI, the Elks Lodge of Sparks, and other organizations, volunteers that joined the group. I did want to say thank you to our Public Works team and our Sparks Police Department. One of the gentlemen, it's actually the store manager for the REI here locally, said that in fifteen years, he does not think he's seen the parks looking as nice as they do right now. So thank you very much for all the work that you guys are doing to help us get there, and likewise, all the volunteers who were there helping us to take it even further.
Ms. Bybee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment, the council last week went out to the Andelin Family Farms Corn Maze, and this year, they have cut the corn maze to honor Forever Fourteen, which is a teen suicide prevention program that is critically important. And it was just such, the whole council was there, moving, emotional. There were a number of families who were there who had lost teens to suicide. And it's just such an unspoken tragedy. Suicide is a tough discussion, and we've had this discussion. I know Councilman Anderson's working with veterans suicide, but teen suicide is the focus of Forever Fourteen. They are trying to make a difference in this community by opening conversations and doing things differently to really make an impactful difference. And I think I've been even more concerned, and then I talked to a couple of the families after, about the impact of COVID, and the impact of COVID on all of us, but especially teens, you know, middle school, high school, who have lost that connection when they were at home, where they weren't going to school, with a lot of their sports and other activities. I mean, it's just an impact on them that for teenagers, it has had a real impact. And so I think I would encourage anyone to go out to Andelin Family Farms through the corn maze and support that and see. Actually, when you're in the maze, you can't see it, but they have a visual, a great, actually, it's on our Facebook page, article on the maze and what it looks like in the Forever Fourteen with the wings. But if you also look up Forever Fourteen social media, see what events they're doing, and maybe, I really feel every one of us can make a difference. I mean, every one of us can reach out to other people who might need someone to listen to, do things that will help make a difference for teenagers especially, and also to make it okay to talk about it, because it is taboo, and that's part of the problem. So check out Forever Fourteen, whatever you could do to support it, I think is critically important for our city, for our community, for our nation. So it was, I was glad and honored to read our proclamation from the City of Sparks, and they did really appreciate the proclamation and how well it was stated of what they do and what their story is, on how it was started and what they're trying to do now. So, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none, we're on to the most exciting part of the program, adjournment. We are adjourned.
Give me just a minute, and we will convene our redevelopment agency meeting. Give me one second, Madam Clerk, you want to let me know when we're good? Oops, I had it, now it's gone. Okay. Okay, are we clear to go? Yep. We had it, and then it's knocking us out, now we're back in again. Give us just a second, sorry for the technical. We good?
Yeah. We're gonna put the electronics aside for this, because we're struggling, and we'll just do an annual meeting.
Okay. All righty, then I'm gonna call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, September twenty-seventh, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee.
Here.
Agency members Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Dare.
Acting Chief Legal Officer Duncan.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Crutts.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, item number three, a public comment. Do I have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment currently, Madam Chair.
And seeing no public comment in the room, I'll close that item. Let's move on to item four point one, approval of the agenda, looking for a motion to approve. We'll have to just do a voice.
Move to approve. We're back up now.
Okay, I do have a motion to approve by Agency Member Lawson. Agency Member Anderson.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote.
I need to be logged back in, I closed my computer.
Are you off? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Let's move on to item five, five point one. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. Do I have any corrections, additions to the minutes, or a motion to approve? Agency Member Vanderwell.
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. Agency Member Lawson.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item six point one, consent items, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills for approval for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of August sixth, twenty-twenty-one through September ninth, twenty-twenty-one. Do I have a motion? Agency Member Dare.
So moved.
And a second, Agency Member Anderson.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, business items, there are none today. Eight point one, comments from the public, do I have any comments from the public?
We have none, Madam Chair.
Okay, and seeing the public is not here in the room, in the chambers, I'm assuming there's no comment. Okay, we'll go ahead and close eight point one. Eight point two, announcements from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. 8.2, announcements from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you.